Regular meeting. Like to thank everyone for being here. We've got plenty of work ahead on this business agenda, so we'll get after it. We are officially called to order at 3:02, and I would ask if you would all please rise for the invocation. Chief Mays, if you'd come up and ask the blessing over this, and then if you'd stay standing for the pledges.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here today to conduct the city's business. Lord, we just ask for your guidance, your wisdom, your discernment, just to serve as a guiding light in your will to how we run affairs in the city. Lord, we pray for healing in this country, Lord, with all that's gone on the last few weeks, Lord, with all the differences, and all this does when things like that happen is just to remind us of how separated we can be at times. Lord, we just ask that you would shine your light so bright and upon your people so that we're blinded and don't see the division but focus more on our common ground, Lord. We ask that you forgive us where we fail you, Lord, and just all we do would shine your light. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pardons to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. Pardons to the citizens of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right, we have a few proclamations that we get to hand out today. Counsel, I'm going to ask you guys to go downstairs, and we'll bring up our League of Women Voters, Hunger Action Month, World Environmental Health Day, and National Preparedness Month. I think we will start with the Hunger Action Month. Whoever has that one. All righty. Whereas hunger is a serious concern in Texas, where one in six people, including one in five children, face food insecurity; and whereas in 2023, 44 million Americans, including 13 million children, struggle with hunger, including one in five individuals and one in four children here in Amarillo; and whereas the city of Amarillo, committed to addressing hunger, proudly partners with the High Plains Food Bank, a member of the Feeding America Network; and whereas each year more than 22,000 residents of Potter County and nearly 20,000 residents in Randall County depend on food assistance; and in 2024, the High Plains Food Bank distributed 8.3 million pounds of food, serving over 12,000 households monthly; and whereas this work is made possible by countless volunteers, donors, and community partners who give generously of their time and resources to fight hunger; and whereas September is recognized as Hunger Action Month, inspiring service, advocacy, and generosity to ensure every family has access to nutritious food. Now, therefore, we, mayor and city council members of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as Hunger Action Month in Amarillo, and call upon all citizens to join in efforts to end hunger in our community, given on our hands and seal of office this 23rd day of September 2025.
Sorry, first time here. Just, yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, September month is basically our call to action, although there's not many, I think, in this room or in the surrounding area that don't know what the need is in our community and how many people are experiencing this on a daily basis. So September is our month, our call to action to help get everyone mobilized and involved. There's a lot of orange involved, as you can see, with the color, but it means more now this year than ever. As it was read, you know, we're reaching and serving some of the highest number of households in the Texas Panhandle that we've ever served before. So that's why it's so important, and we appreciate the opportunity to be recognized, and we thank you for everybody to help us continue. Thanks again.
Okay, the next proclamation we have is for National Preparedness Month. Max, in Officer Emergency Management, if you want to come up?
No, he's doing it all.
Oh, I mean, we got some. Get Les in his place. We'll get started. You ready, Les? Okay, great, thanks. Whereas National Preparedness Month serves as a reminder that we all must take action to prepare now and throughout the year for the types of emergencies that could affect us, where we live, work, and visit; and whereas emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every citizen to ensure that individuals, families in our community are prepared for emergencies; and whereas investing in preparedness of ourselves, our families, and our businesses can reduce the number of casualties and the economic devastation in our community and in our nation; and whereas all citizens of Amarillo are encouraged to participate in the community preparedness and resilience engagement to learn more about emergency preparedness and opportunities to volunteer and develop skills from our community's emergency response, volunteer and faith-based agencies. Now, therefore, we, mayor and city council members of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as National Preparedness Month. Thank you so much, Mayor and Counsel. So it is National Preparedness Month. The theme of this year's National Preparedness Month is Preparedness Starts at Home. So I definitely want to take this minute to take advantage of offering that any citizen in the Amarillo area, even the region, can partner with our team any day of the week through both our LEPC, our Local Emergency Planning Committee, so if you're a business owner, and if you're just a citizen that wants to get involved, our Community Emergency Response Team's a fantastic way to learn preparedness skills and also prepare your family even more. So thank you so much. We have the exquisite honor of serving you every day, and we take it very seriously. So thank you very much. Our next proclamation is for World Environmental Health Day, and I know our Environmental Services Department is here, so if you guys would come forward from our Environmental Services as we read this proclamation for World Environmental Health Day. Whereas the health, prosperity, and vitality of Amarillo, Texas and its residents are closely tied to the protection of our natural environment and safeguarding our air, water, land, and high plains ecosystem is essential to maintaining a thriving and sustainable community; and whereas environmental health plays a vital role in public health and advancing efforts in food protection, wastewater management, vector control, and environmental justice, it ensures a safer and healthier future for all who call Amarillo home; and whereas the condition of our environment directly affects the well-being of people, animals, and plants, and addressing threats such as food safety risk, sanitary nuisances, and vector-borne diseases is critical to reducing risk and improving the quality of life throughout our region; and whereas the city of Amarillo recognizes the importance of education, outreach, and community partnerships in encouraging responsible environmental stewardship and inspiring citizens to take meaningful action for present and future generations; and whereas the Environmental Health Department and its dedicated staff work tirelessly to protect residents from foodborne, waterborne, and vectorborne illnesses through innovative programs, inspections, and collaboration, strengthening both public safety and community well-being. Now, therefore, we, mayor and city council members of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim September 26, 2025, as World Environmental Health Day.
Thank you. I would like to thank the mayor and city council for their continued support. I would also like to thank the amazing team I have behind me. Their day-in and day-out work is basically what keeps the community safe and healthy. Thank you.
And last but not least, a proclamation for the League of Women Voters. Do we have anyone from the League of Women Voters here? And last but not least, a proclamation for the League of Women Voters. Do we have anyone from the League of Women Voters here? All right, well, City of Amarillo, Texas City Council proclamation, whereas the League of Women Voters of Amarillo was formed in 1950, officially recognized in 1951, and for over 75 years, has strengthened democracy through education, advocacy, and service; and whereas the League championed women's rights to serve on juries, helped eliminate poll taxes, and has long worked to remove barriers to participation in civic life; and whereas the League continues its mission through nonpartisan voter guides, candidate forums, Civics 101 seminars, and outreach that provides citizens with the knowledge to make informed decisions; and whereas members have led efforts to improve civic and community life, from supporting fair representation in voting machines to promoting water conservation and public health initiatives; and whereas the League has built a strong culture of voter registration with volunteer deputy registrars active in every public high school in Potter and Randall Counties, as well as at community events across Amarillo; and whereas the League of Women Voters of Amarillo remains nonpartisan, united in its mission to empower voters and defend democracy and to ensure every voice is heard. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council members of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby deem it an honor and a privilege to proclaim September 2025 as League of Women Voters in Amarillo's 75th anniversary, and commend its members for their dedication to informed citizenship and to the democratic values that strengthen our community. Signed by the mayor and all the council members, this day, 23rd day of September 2025.
What an honor it is to stand with the women behind me who have been working in this community, not for 75 years, but for some of those 75 years, to empower voters and defend democracy. The League of Women Voters of Amarillo envisions a democracy in which every person has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate, and we work on that every day. These ladies are just a small portion of our league, and we are open to everyone. We are nonpartisan, so no matter what party you are on, no matter what gender you are, we welcome men as well. Please come join us because voting is where the change happens, and we want to see everybody in our community empowered to do that with knowledge and with the confidence they need. So thank you for being here. Thank you for being a part of our community, and thank you to these ladies for the work that they do.
Okay, one, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you. time, we'll move on in our agenda to item six and ask if we have any announcements, Mr. City Manager. Okay, we'll move on to item seven, public comment. And the city secretary, if you'll read us into that, please.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Stanley. Thank you for participating in today's city council meeting. Your input and your opinions are important to us, and we're glad that you're here to share them today. At each posted meeting, we invite our fellow community members to address city council regarding posted agenda items or topics related to city policy. During our public comment session and any public hearings we have today, each speaker will get three minutes to address the city council. At the end of two and a half minutes, a warning beep will sound to alert you that you have 30 seconds left to wrap up your thoughts. We have multiple public hearings today. If you are here to speak on a public hearing, we would ask that you make your comment on that item either during public comment or during the public hearing, but not both, in order to help us keep accurate records. It is your decision at which point you would like to speak. When you come to the microphone today, please state your name and whether or not you live within Amarillo city limits. If you are addressing council on an agenda item, please state your position so we may reflect that properly in the minutes. If you are speaking on an item not on today's agenda, the Texas Open Meetings Act limits how elected officials may respond. Council may respond with statements of fact. They may ask that the topic be added to a future agenda, or they may refer the matter to the city manager, who can have staff step out and visit with you regarding your topic. So again, thank you for being here today. And our first speaker will be Julia Miller. I don't believe Julia's here, so we'll move to Kendra K. Seawright. Is Kendra here?
Mayor, Counsel, my name is Kendra Seawright. I live in Potter County, here in Amarillo. I wanted to address you today to ask that we have more public discussions about the FERMI America deal. You all know you've received our emails, and we really appreciate you taking the time to read those and consider them. Where we have received some replies back, we've continued to go further and to reach out to Carson County to find more information about this, where we were turned empty-handed. We would like to ask that, obviously, you all probably have more to do with Trent size more than we do, but we just want to ask questions. We just want to understand where it's coming from. We want to know, you know, how it benefits us and how much we have in stake with this deal, and moving forward, if we could have some more transparency so we can understand timelines and know what we're getting into as far as taxpayers and ratepayers for the electricity bills that are most likely to spike because of this. I've really only spent the last three months looking into the information about AI centers and the difference between that and a data center, and it feels like I'm a little bit drowning. I feel like I need a tinfoil hat, but I would really appreciate to hear what you think about it as well. I'm no expert, but I just have, I can't be the only one with questions or concerns about this, and seeing it in the newspaper was the first time I was hearing about it, and talking to people in Pampa, they were also feeling blindsided about it. So I just really hope that we can have some more forthcoming conversation about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next will be Jeff McGonigal, and after Jeff will be Josiah West on deck.
So soon, so soon. Jeff McGonigal, hola como esta? I live in Amarillo, Texas. I'm gonna go fast on this because I got a lot to say, but I don't have a whole lot of time to say it. It's been a while. It appears you have a new place to reign. I see in honoring the city's tradition of fearing change, we still have the Five Guys. I see a new backdrop. It's white like White Castle. I see Ronald McDonald, the forked tongue, still mocks the olive Amarillo from the wall behind. All you really need is Dave Thomas as city manager, making sure the path to Pleasant Valley doesn't lead to making things right in Pleasant Valley in what was promised to them decades ago. What does us all have in common? Hamburgers. Hamburger in the land of beef where we could have filet mignon, but the power structure composes the unspoken standard of mediocrity and gives us hamburger. You see hamburger, mediocrity, where people are inspired by leadership to just survive when we are all here to thrive as the excellent beings that we are. Here, though, Amarillo, not to be confused with the excellent city of Amarillo, proposed in '23, things are kept secret. Even the standard of mediocrity, which remains secretly unspoken, secret, and it continues with FERMI, F-E-R-M-I, feeding on every resource and mind insatiably. In this secret meeting with FERMI today, I sure hope you didn't sell the city soul, because water is soul. Speaking of '23 and secrets and not resolving problems but sweeping them under the rug, the art of deception, I wish to return to April 25, 2023. A battle ensued when Councilman Stanley was called out by Mayor Nelson on behalf of citizens concerned and uneasy regarding words spoken by candidate Stanley regarding Alex Fairley. I just may have been one of those citizens. This issue remains an open sore, and I'm challenging again, as I did in '23, that some courageous soul on this council investigates what really happened. After I requested this the first time, I had city officials and citizens come to me and say, "I don't like the way it went down, Jeff, but I want to know the truth of things." The other open sore is IISD board member Connie the Curse Brown's ineligible to even run in '23, yet 29 months later, she's still on the board, a board which needs the highest standard of integrity. Have you seen what's going on at IISD since '23? Two kids dead. Two kids dead, killed by negligence. No memorials, no candlelight vigils, no Moms March in the Morning, no spray painting at the pedophile ranch, just denial of wrongdoing and keeping things secret in plain sight. Interesting enough, both candidates did seem to win unfairly and fully backed by Fairley. It's time to investigate the cases for the peace of mind and overall health of the community. So 2025 is the year of a clean city, comes alive. 2026, the year, the urgent year of the fix. So what about the all is the call?
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate you, sir.
Josiah West.
Is he? Okay. Then, and I want to mention, Counsel, you have comments from Lena Seberg, written comments in front of you. Next to speak is Irma Flores. And after Irma, on deck will be Jerry Ross.
Good afternoon. This is my first time in front of a council meeting, so I'm just recently retired, resident of Amarillo, Texas, and I recently thought I was going to retire to have a peaceful, restful rest of my life, but it seems like some homelessness in San Jacinto, where I've resided for 44 years now, had a different idea. On September 10, my porch was vandalized by a deranged homeless man. I live alone. I called 911 four times, and it took him a long time. He was already there and gone. By the time they came, they didn't find him. Next morning, I'm calling the police department and making the vandalism report, and he, a very smart police officer, remembered him, and he saw him at the end of my block, four houses down, and he turned around and went to arrest him, and guess what? He saw who got him arrested. And it seems like since then, he has been taunting me. He's been in my backyard. He took one of my grandkids' toys and beat the tarnation out of it, lifted it out in the alley, for me to know that he'd been in my backyard, and I guess to scare me. Well, I don't want to be scared, and I just want to see if maybe there's something that can be done with these homelessness. I know that, you know, they, bless their hearts, some of them are hungry, but some of them are on drugs, and they're not there to be nice to the residents in San Jacinto. They're there to steal and destroy property. I used to be able to, and I do display, I'm a Christian and a patriot, and I do display my Lord's cross and our flag, and I felt like that was also another reason that he might have been attacking, because I did hear, I've got a ring, a video on the ring, and I'm hoping to be able to learn how to send it to you guys, so y'all can see exactly what I went through. I heard a lot of comments from him in regards to my religion and my gender, and I just feel like it could have been, you know, just me he wanted, but I'm not sure. I just know that there's lots of homelessness, and there are men that could be working instead of running the streets from midnight to 5:00 in the morning. So I'd like to see if maybe somehow y'all could direct me to know where I could go to maybe find a solution to this problem in San Jacinto, because I know y'all want to do Sixth Street, and Sixth Street is beautiful, but people tend to be afraid of Sixth Street when they see what, you know, where they have to park their cars. So hopefully, it'll get better.
We're glad to get involved with you, so specifically, if we could have maybe Mr. Freeman or Mr. Path, if you'd like to get with you directly. So if you don't mind stepping off to the side, we'll go ahead and do everything we can for you today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our last speaker that signed up is Jerry Ross.
Hi, my name is Jerry Ross, and I'm a citizen of Randall County, an Amarillo citizen and Amarillo parent. As an Amarillo citizen and parent, the FERMI American AI Data Center concerns me for a few reasons. From an economic lens, Amarillo gets really excited when big companies want to do business here. We give them tax cuts, incentives, and land. These deals are famously so good. land. These deals are famously so good that almost all of our Economic Development Board resigned in 2024. Today, council members met with Fermi America to talk about water rights. Fermi is another big company promising big things for the Panhandle, and I'm worried that our city government is going to make another deal that mainly benefits a big corporation. And to make matters worse, it's not tax breaks, it's water, which is something Amarillo needs to exist. Our children, if we want them to continue in the land of our home, need this water to continue. Fermi claims that their four nuclear reactors powering the AI center won't use much water, but that is only contingent on massive design change that needs NRC approval to make happen, which they don't have. On top of our water, they want to use our natural gas and wind turbine energy. Amarillo's citizens don't even get to use our wind turbine energy. It gets sent off to other parts of the state. And in other communities that have these AI data centers, they are seeing increases in their electricity costs, impacts on their air quality. I would invert, I would urge this council to be transparent about the conversations they are having with Fermi America about our water. Before the council starts giving them our water and raising our electricity costs, this really should be an issue that the voters have a say in. This company needs Amarillo. Amarillo does not need this company. You say you love where we are, and we want our children to continue here, correct? This is our home. They need that water. Their children need that water. Don't turn your back on Amarillo. Be transparent.
And Mayor, that concludes everyone that signed up today.
Okay, I thank everyone for speaking here today. If I have anyone else that would like to offer a public comment, please raise your hand. So yes, ma'am, you in the front, if you'll come forward, then we'll do you next.
Hi there. My name is Lisa Robinelli. I prepared marks remarks, but I'm just going to go off the cuff because I know that the Fermi is a major source of interest for the community. And for right now, I really want to address the people, not necessarily council, and in fact, the people of America, because now is really a time that we need to reframe how we look at our investments, because we've already paid for this stuff. And this is really a red pill, blue pill type moment with respect to how your dollars are spent on economic economic development. If you take the blue pill, you stay asleep and you believe that job creation enough is is what you're going to get, and that's what you deserve. This is your land, your future, your water, your children's future. I appreciate appreciate what you said. That was that was very well put. You can take the red pill or and demand demand better. You can understand that you can get an ROI for your investment. You've already paid for the waterways. You've already paid for the infrastructure. What is the answer to this? We need to have a civic endowment. Fermi is going public. I don't know if a lot of you know that, but they have filed for an IPO with the SEC. And all of this energy that they are planning on creating, they're not going to give it here. This is not a bunch of that. They're going to sell it. Amarillo and Amarillo residents need to get a return on this investment. There needs to be investment in startups. There needs to be investment in education, supporting WT, supporting AISD. I don't know how these 600 jobs that they are promising seven to 12 years later in Carson County are going to positively impact Potter or Randall County in terms of a tax base, an increased tax base. We all are familiar with Flint, Michigan, East Palestine, Ohio, and the catastrophes that have happened there. God forbid there be a catastrophe here. How are you going to pay to leave? What if you need to leave? The people of East Palestine, Ohio can't leave. Nobody's buying their home. Nobody's picking up their mortgage. There needs to be an investment from Fermi, not the city, not AISD, or AEDC, excuse me. It needs to be from Fermi. They are going public, and that money needs to be returned directly in terms of a civic endowment. And I appreciate all of you, all of y'all taking the time to listen to us, to hear our concerns, to hear our complaints, but also to think through a lens of innovation. As a as a strategist, as a individual who works in innovation management with IP portfolios, this is what it takes to move things forward to the next level. The conversation has already shifted from the national level. I've been advocating for years the repeal of the Baydole Act, with Howard Lutnick going after that, and the ability to recoup on the ROI for the innovation that has already been put forth. This is your moment and your opportunity to give it back to Amarillo and let Amarillo be more than a truck stop. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. If you want to go ahead and come forward, Mr. Fisher will do you next.
Afternoon.
Hi, gentlemen. How are you? My name is Harper Metcalf. I'm a resident of Amarillo, and I just wanted to add my voice to these other ones that are asking for transparency and accountability in the Fermi America deal. I just want you to know that a lot of citizens are saying, I don't want this, but there's nothing we can do. I'm hearing that all over the place, and I just want you all to hear that, that there are a lot of people that are against this, and they think that it's just gone too far. Their voice doesn't count. It's too small, and this company is too big for us to fight back. So I just really want you to take that into account, that you might not be hearing everything, because people are so disillusioned and they feel like it doesn't matter. So I'm just really asking you to listen to all these voices and really take it seriously, that we are incredibly concerned about the future and the future for our children and grandchildren. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher.
Before I start, I'd like to ask for item 8W to be taken off the consent agenda. It looks like we're going to increase a project by 250,000 because of a delay. I'd just like to know what accountability do we have? Was it our fault? Whose fault was it?
Sure, we'll pull 8W.
Thank you. My name is Mike Fisher. I live in the city limits of Amarillo. Last, at the last council meeting, I spoke, I misspoke. I said about property taxes. I said it was like an adjusted tax rate. What it's called is an effective tax rate. So it's how much does it affect citizens? So it's the percentage of your income that goes to taxes. So just take the amount of taxes you pay, divide about how much you make. That's the percentage of, your percentage of your income that goes to taxes. Instead of listening to Laura Stor who's telling you that we have the lowest rate in in the state, which that may be, but we're in the top 20% of the nation in property taxes, when you divide your property taxes by your income. Effective tax rate, remember that. On today's work session, you guys talked about you had a water supply agreement with Fermi America, and a lot of people are talking about that. I'd like to, you know, we're, we've got 300 years of water rights supposedly. So which is it? Do we have 300 years? Do we have 400 years? Do we? Do we have that? We're parading these kids around every few months. We parade these kids. Every drop counts. Well, do they? Does every drop count when we're going to sell? This could be up to three times the amount our city uses in water. We're, that means we could expand Amarillo to 800,000 people, and that would be the amount of water we would use if they use water to cool this nuclear plant. So I have a solution, maybe, a suggestion. Maybe a backdrop to this could be an agreement with Yoot Lake to where if, like, maybe they're in some sort of retainer, that if water levels drop below a certain amount, and if they're above a certain amount, they'll release water into Meredith to help with this. So we have a, an emergency plan if we start pulling too much water from the aquifer. So just a suggestion, you know, a lot of people get up here and complain and never have a solution. I think that's could be a possible addition. Now, if you go to the handout that I gave you, last week, I went to a tiers meeting, tiers one meeting, and there's a hotel, our former mayor's husband, and the guy from Underwood Law Firm, he's buying the courtyard by Marriott. Three years ago, we sold that hotel to a publicly traded company for 20 million plus dollars. On that paper you see in front of me, where Mr. Freeman here accused me of being a, you know, one of the crazy people out here that's just making up stuff, you'll see an SEC document. The first page shows how much they have it on the books for. If you look at the highlighted number, it's the, it's the total amount that they they have it on the books for. And then next to it, you have the depreciation. It's over 20 million. The next page shows you.
Mr. Fisher, I appreciate it, sir. We've got the document in our hand, and and I know you're available. We can definitely contact you if we've got any further questions on it.
So why wouldn't you want to hear the rest of this? I mean, I got another minute. You let you let people from from the colonies step here for five minutes? Like, you've never let me go over hardly ever.
I appreciate it, sir. On the public comment period, we're going to honor the three minutes so we can respect.
All right, I'm gonna I'm gonna interrupt it next time when you let people go over five, three minutes.
I appreciate you.
And you're not the guy that you act like you are. You're not. You're not.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Yes, ma'am, in the green.
My name is Joan Gaines. I'm a resident of Amarillo and Potter County. I would ask that more be done about the AI facility and the nuclear plant to inform us and tell more. I know I must have missed some things, but I have heard more from friends in other states that it's on their news about what is happening in Amarillo than it's been on our news about the AI and the nuclear facility. Our water is precious. We make an allegiance. We say one nation under God, state of Texas under God. God Almighty gave us our land, our air, our water, and He has commanded us to be good stewards of these resources. We need more information. There needs to be more investigation, because these things are precious in Amarillo. I try and conserve water at my house and do these other things. People have said how precious the water is, and that our aquifer is not going to last forever. We need to do more investigation into these businesses and what it will mean to the future of Amarillo, to our farmers, to our dairies, to our people. So please, take more time with this and share and let get the public's input. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Ford, I saw your hand up. Please come forward.
Mike Ford, Amarillo, Texas. I just wanted to, I don't have anything really prepared aside from the fact that you can see here today that that there is a lot of concern about this new facility. I've spent four decades trying in this state and in the in the country to bill consent for nuclear projects. And if this project is done properly, it can bring a lot of benefit to this to this community, our community. But if it's not, it's a disaster. And that's why I stress in everything that I do, every communication I have within the state, that these projects need to be staffed by legitimate nuclear operators. There is a lot hinging on this project, and it requires these air-cooled condensers. There's 600 acres of air-cooled condensers that'll be required, which is enormous. The problem is, is that the NRC has not approved these things. And so you are going to be faced with the fact that either they're going to have a very minimal request for maybe 16 million gallons for a year, or, and that's for the nuclear project, or they're going to be looking at 150 million gallons per day if they go with the cooling towers, which is going to create three Amarillos out there. The problem is, is that once the NRC steps in, you're going to be nobody, you're you're not going to be anything special aside from member of the public. And I say I say this from experience. You'll find on my name on a docketing memo, docketing letter on a $4 billion spent nuclear fuel project that was in West Texas. I was asked to come in and basically save that project, and I did. We got it docketed, and we, the company benefited from it greatly, and they are still trying to get that cited. The problem is, is that the NRC came in as an anti-consent organization and destroyed the consent. Even the state of Texas wrote a law forbidding the the citing of that facility. Because the NRC came in and asked, well, Mr. Farmer, Mr. Rancher, do you really need access to your sand, your your site, your land, your facility? How how many times, Mr. Rancher, do you need to get access to your cattle? And they destroyed the consent that was was once there. So I would strongly recommend that you work closely with the principles of this of this company. They're going to be leasing out their services. Again, that what was said here, they're going to be accessing or asking for our groundwater without any return. It's going to be all leased to tenants there for their AI facilities. It could be a good thing for our community, but then again, it could be a disaster. So it's it's not, it's not necessarily a win-win if we don't construct this properly. And I, again, I have 40 years' experience, and this is in my wheelhouse, and I can tell you with lots and lots of experience that the NRC is not our friend. And they will come in and steamroll our interests, and and if we don't work together, there is a huge problem on the horizon. Thank you very much.
Mr. Ford, I don't know that we could agree with you more. Thank you. Yes, ma'am, over here on the far right. We can make an adjustment if you'd rather, or if you're fine there, that's okay.
It's okay. Thank you so much for the consideration. I do really appreciate it.
If you don't mind to give us your name and if you reside
Yeah.
in the city.
My name is Madison Boyle, and I am a resident of Amarillo and Randall County. I am requesting more details on Fermi and the water deals being made. Many farmers are still feeling the impact from the devastating wildfires that happened last year. The fact that we are always on a wildfire or red warning should raise concern about losing precious resources. I have family that was directly impacted by those fires, and so I have a lot of concerns. Without water, we will not be able to have a flourishing agriculture industry or a failsafe if wildfires do happen again. I am concerned for citizens and specifically farmers and their livelihoods. Please listen to your constituents of Amarillo and act in our best interest and your farmer's best interest, because agriculture is what has built Amarillo. That's why we have a cow as our symbol, right? At the very least, I'd just like a little bit more information on what this deal looks like and how it would even benefit Amarillo in the first place. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Madison. Appreciate you. Gentlemen in the back in the mask, I saw your hand next, and then we'll come back to you in the front, sir. If you don't mind to give us your name and if you reside in the city when you get here.
Howdy, y'all. My name's Josiah West. I live inside the city of Amarillo, and most of my concerns have been addressed, but I'd like to get specific and wonder which of the Carson County wells are y'all talking about? I've been looking through, and I found 40 plus that are owned by City of Amarillo. How many of them are y'all leasing? And how much is that going to take away from our ability to, you know, pump groundwater for when we're short drawn from Meredith? So I'd like more info, and I'd like more consideration towards the citizens of Amarillo, because after the initial construction is complete, there are going to be 40 to 50 permanent jobs. Who's going to get those? Are they going to be local? How can we make Amarillo benefit even more? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, here on the front.
My name is Thomas Tuchek. I am a resident of Amarillo and Randall County. I'm, just like the others, I'm here to speak about the Fermi. We just want more more information. About a month ago, I reached out to all of you, actually asking for more information on where Fermi is and the planning stages and everything. Mr. Reed was kind enough to reach out and say, hey, this is with Carson County. So then we went to Carson County and started asking, and they don't really seem to know either. So the transparency is what we're looking for. It just feels like a lot of things are happening, but nobody has any answers for us, and it's confusing, and we just kind of want to know what's going on. The water issue is so scary to us. Like, every year, it feels like we're on water restrictions every summer. So why would we want to sell our water rights when we don't really know, like, how much they're going to end up using overall? So just, you know, take this seriously, consider it, and consider your citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. Do I have anyone else here who would like to offer public comment today? today? Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Just give a remark of, we, we hear you. We definitely take this opportunity to do our due diligence seriously, and then we've taken no action. We've, we've done nothing to obligate the city in any way, and, and we want to learn more, and I believe that we'll all know more. And so we will move forward one step at a time, and then we'll take you guys with us every, every chance we can. There are some contract negotiations that'll have to be done, and so I know that's frustrating to have to read it on an exec, but that is the way the contract terms are brought to us, just like any other water contract or other business dealings that we've had. So we appreciate your concern and, and we hear you. So thank you, guys, for speaking today. We'll move into our consent agenda. Per Mr. Fisher, he wanted to pull item 8W for a little further discussion before we vote on that. I'm glad to pull that off. Counsel, do I have anything else on the consent agenda that you guys need more on? Councilman Simpson?
8P, please.
Say that again, P?
8P, Mr. Paul.
Okay. Anything from this side? No, sir. Okay, we'll pull 8W and 8P. We can vote on those items individually. Would request a motion for the remaining consent agenda. Are you out of battery, sir?
I'm fine. It's fine.
Oh, it is live.
I move to approve the consent agenda less 8P and 8W as presented.
Second? Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now take item 8P. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, I'm going to turn this over to Rich Guyan.
Yeah, I will. I will just say a couple of things. Why I asked to have that pulled off before Rich gets started is, you know, as we looked at the budget across all areas, we, we've, we've used this term "cost recovery" a lot. That is, areas of the city that generate revenue that have expenses, to be able to get the expense and revenue more in line with each other. That way, we looked at the golf course as one area that's almost, the golfers are paying for that, so it doesn't have to be subsidized. We looked at all different areas, environmental health. One large area that we have that really has a wide gap that has to be subsidized by taxpayers is the operation of the Civic Center. But that gap is, is filled by, by hotel occupancy tax. And I think he's going to go over kind of the history of that. But I know, as we look at the, at the new agreement on the concession revenue, I just wanted to learn, as we look across the city to find ways of generating revenue so that we don't have to put the gap on other taxpayers, and, and in this case, it's the hoteliers or the people that stay in the hotel, you know, how is this agreement kind of closing that gap at the Civic Center? So maybe, Rich, if you could give us an update of where we are on the gap of the Civic Center, how much hot tax that is taking and kind of what the trend is on that? And then maybe more specifically, is this, is this agreement that we're looking at, is it helping close and fill that gap?
It, it is. So if you go back, and I can absolutely show this, we have the 10-year history of what the subsidy from hot tax looks like. The good news is, we'll have, in about a week or so, we'll have actuals this year. It's going down. It actually has. It's, it's, it's kind of got up and down, but this year, we've actually been able to drive some efficiency, so that subsidy is going to come down. We're already seeing that in projections, and when I get those, I'll share those numbers. This particular contract is actually a revenue contract. So typically, we have a guarantee on our last revenue contract with the vendor for $400,000 minimum to the Civic Center on an annual basis. Over the last three years, we've been closer to 600 to the, to the Civic Center. So on this contract, we're actually raising that minimum to 500, which gives us a guarantee of another $100,000 a year out of our concession sales.
So, so on this agreement, we're, that we're getting an additional 100,000 a year?
Correct.
As a minimum?
As a minimum. But we've been averaging closer to six.
As 600,000?
To the Civic Center out of concession sales. And that varies by the events, the, within the contract, there are different percentages that come to the Civic Center.
So this, this agreement wouldn't necessarily get additional revenue, then?
No.
It just, it just upped the minimum?
It just ups the minimum.
Okay. So there wasn't any opportunity, I guess, to look at this agreement as a way to, to close that? When I look at the, the numbers, I guess this year in the budget, the, the operations, the total cost of the Civic Center was about 5.6 million, and the subsidy was, that we, we budgeted as half that, 2.3 million.
2.3.
But you said we, we could wind up coming under that?
It is going to come down this year.
Okay.
I just can't, I can't give the specific numbers. Just off of the estimates, we'll have that in about, I think Laura said.
Yeah, here in a few weeks, we're waiting for the end of the fiscal year to come through next week with payroll and everything else. But when we were working on budget, which we had actuals through, you know, the summertime about, that subsidy was anticipated to be down around 2.1 million, and I think that's a little bit high still. So I think it may even come down less than that in the current year.
And then the year before that was the 1, 1.9 million or just about?
1.893.
Yes.
Yeah, got it. So really, no opportunity to close the gap with this?
No, the prob, the, the, what we're running up against with this is just the facility itself. We don't have the facilities to, to expand catering services. In other words, we don't have a kitchen, and we don't have the ability to expand. If we had expanded concession services, then we would make more revenue, which would help close that gap. So there would have to be some investment in the infrastructure in order to be able to expand the concession services and make more revenue.
Okay. And then e, even though that, I guess it, I mean, the trend has been continued, that this gap is widening?
Right.
So?
Has, has been up until this year, and this is going to be the first year that we'll actually see it close a little bit.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions on that contract? No? Thank you, Rich. Appreciate that. Would ask for a motion on item 8P.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 8W. Mr. City Manager, who would you like to take that one?
Jennifer Gonzalez, and I think Rich is going to pipe in as well.
Yeah, just before Jennifer gets started, I can actually explain the delay and why the cost went up. So utility billing is moving off their existing software vendor to a new one due to ongoing unresolved service issues. We've had real support issues. When you migrate from one software provider to another, it's kind of a two-step process. You have to export the data af, out of the existing vendor, then you clean it up, you put it in the right format for the new software, and it gets imported into the new software. The issue that we've had is, we've, we've had real difficulty getting a clean export out of our existing vendor and the support to fix that. And we've had to invest a lot more resources into cleaning that data up to make sure when it goes into the new software, we don't create issues for our customers. So what you're seeing here is the, the additional time and consulting it's ta, it's taken to clean that data up to bring it into the new software. Does that make sense?
It does. Can you tell us how many times you've gone through that process, sir?
Currently, we've gone through two test case passes, and every single time we've gone through those, the data has gotten cleaner. So with this, we're adding an additional test case scenario where we will be testing from what's coming out of our current software going into the new one, and we're hoping that that should be at the end of November, which it should be very clean at that point.
Yeah, but bear in mind, that's full imports to test. So there's a lot of steps that we go through in between that. You know, we go through, run it through several scripts, make sure that looks clean, and then we do a full import and do a side-by-side to make sure, okay, our data's clean. So it's, it's not just three. There's a lot of, there's a lot of steps in between those full imports that.
And I think the question was also earlier that was it a delay on our end, or was the delay on our new software providers? And actually, it's really a delay cost from our old software, which is one of the reasons we're trying to transition off of it. So we're doing the best we can with what we have, Jennifer, and our team have, and with the assistance of Rich's team have done an amazing job. But we've got to make sure that data is good and not put bad data into the new system.
What part of the old system? Was it the connectivity or VPN? What was the?
No, it's, this is actually the software that manages all the customer records and the billing itself.
Okay.
So it's, it's really critical that that billing information goes in cleanly, or we, we could have all kinds of issues with customer bills for water.
Ms. Jennifer, thank you for that. Any further questions on item 8W? Would ask for a motion.
I move to approve item 8W as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second on 8W. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, that concludes our consent agenda. Moving into section nine, our discussion items. We have none up on discussion here today. Do we have any future requested discussion items?
I, I do have one, and it's kind of looking at the budget process we just went through. And I'm interested in a, a presentation and to look at zero-based budgeting and what the benefits might be for us as, and, and what the downfalls might be.
Okay. So specifically, you're looking for not a recap on existing budget?
Right.
But the option of maybe some of the things that we came through in the existing budget, perhaps it even ties into our financial policy a little bit in, in being able to get those actuals?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Path, I would ask, like, do you, do you, you, you have a good direction on, on which way you could take that one, or?
Yeah, we can provide a presentation on zero-based budgeting and, and, and what that looks like and how that's implemented. So, yeah, we can work on that.
Okay. And then, Councilman, we can, we can try for the first meeting in October, but if that's not together with everything else, we would just look for the second meeting.
We can move that down.
Okay. Perfect. I know we've got a full agenda already on the 14th, so any other future requested items from Council? Okay, we will now move into our non-consent agenda items. Section 10. Item 10A is a public hearing, and Mr. Brady Kendrick, also known as our favorite presenter.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is item 10A, a public hearing in consideration of ordinance 8220. This is a public hearing and first reading of the ordinance rezoning lots 1 and 2, Block 1, Krebs Edition, Unit Number 1. This is located in Potter County, Texas, in the vicinity of Westgate Parkway West and Dutton Drive. The applicant is William Biggs for Krebs Cycling LLC, and they are requesting the rezone from Agricultural District to Office District 2 and Light Commercial District. And Lot 2 will be the Office District 2 request, and Lot 1 will be the Light Commercial request, which is the lot that fronts I-40. This property was annexed into the city back in 2024, and at the time, there was a medical facility under construction on the southernmost lot, and that is the lot that they are requesting to go to O-2. And then the other lot will be future commercial development. There are no immediate plans for that property, but they are wanting to go ahead and get zoned ahead of time. Since this was outside the city limits at the time that City Plan 2045 was adopted, we will assign the place types at a later date when staff does an administrative update. But given that this does create an ideal transitional zoning pattern from I-40 to the north, down to the neighborhood to the south, homestead, this would conform with the goals and objectives of City Plan regarding the zoning pattern it is setting up in this area. And given the zoning and development patterns found in this area, the Planning and Zoning Commission believed the request was appropriate for this area and would not result in any detrimental impacts if approved. We did send public notices as required by state law. No comments have been received of this meeting, and Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval with a 5-0 vote.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Any questions for Mr. Kendrick, Council? Okay, thank you, sir. At this time, we'll open a public hearing. Do I have anyone here who would like to speak for or against this item? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and would entertain a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number 8220.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with a 5-0 vote. Item 10B, Mr. Kendrick, you again.
Yes, 10B is a public hearing in consideration of ordinance 8221. This is also a rezoning, a rezoning of a 28.91 acre tract of unplanted land located in Section 65, Block 9, BSNF Survey, Randall County, Texas, in the vicinity of Heritage Hills Parkway and John Thomas Street. The applicant is Foreman Land Surveyors, Inc., for P-Dub Land Holdings Limited. They are requesting the rezone from Agricultural District to Residential District 3. And this is for the next phase of the Heritage Hills subdivision. This property, if approved, would be proposed to be developed at the 147 single-family detached homes. It would conform with City Plan 2045 as this area is designated as Neighborhood Low. And given the location of this tract within the interior of the neighborhood, it is a logical continuation of zoning and development patterns in the area the Planning and Zoning Commission found. We did not receive any comments on this request as of today, and the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended of this request with a 5-0 vote.
Any questions for Mr. Kendrick? Okay, at this time, I will open a public hearing. Do I have anyone who would like to speak for or against item 10B? Seeing no one will close the hearing, would ask for a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number 8221 as presented.
Second. I have a motion and I have a second from Place 3. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with a 5-0 vote. Mr. Kendrick, one more time.
Yes, item 10C is a public hearing in consideration of ordinance 8222. This is a public hearing and first reading of an ordinance to consider rezoning a 56.1 acre tract of land that includes unplanted land and a portion of Track A, Block 1, the Trails at Taskosa Golf Club, Unit Number 1. This is located in Potter County in Section 11, Block 9, BSNF Survey, in the vicinity of West Amarillo Boulevard and Parkview Drive. The applicant is John Dunn, Jr., for Taskosa Development Company LLC, Spike Box LLC, and Bradley Hastings. They are requesting the zone, rezone from Agricultural District and Plan Development District 390 to Plan Development District 390A for the, a single-family subdivision, the next phase of the Trails at Taskosa single-family subdivision. And the area that is proposed as a second phase is there to the left of the park area there that runs through the middle of the subdivision. This would conform with City Plan 2045 as this area is designated as the Neighborhood Low place type. And the Trails at Taskosa subdivision, this is a single-family subdivision. That's a HOA neighborhood with private streets and green spaces. And the reason that this is a planned development, it kind of mixes residential District 1 lot sizes with residential District 3 development standards pertaining to setbacks and lot coverages. They wanted to kind of create a unique neighborhood out there with some varying development standards. So that's why the first phase was a planned development to begin with, and they are largely planning to continue the same development standards that were utilized in Phase 1. Single-family detached homes are the allowed land use. Maximum lot coverages, predominantly, they utilize 65%, but the lots that back upon the park in the middle and the golf course to the north, they are proposing a 70% max lot coverage. And then the setbacks, front yard setbacks will be 15 feet, rear yard would be 10 feet, except for the lots along those just mentioned areas. Those will have a five-foot rear yard setback, and then interior side yard setback would, would be five feet, which is typical of other residential zoning districts. And the Planning and Zoning Commission found that this would be a continuation of what is found in Phase 1 and is a logical development continuation for this area. We did not receive any public comments on this item as of today, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this item with a 5-0 vote.
Questions for Mr. Kendrick on item 10C? At this time, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Do I have anyone who would like to speak for or against this item? Seeing no one will close the public hearing, would ask for a motion.
Move to adopt ordinance 8222 as adopted.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 10D. We have another public hearing. Do we have Mrs. Mills coming forward on this one, Mr. Path? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Council. This is a public hearing in consideration of a resolution for the authorization of applying for federal grants. So I have up there the 5307 grant, our text operating grant, our bus and bus facilities grant, the, a new grant we have, the enhanced mobility of seniors, individuals with disabilities, and then our TDU credits to match some of those grants. And attached is the proposed program of projects that list all of our things that we plan to apply for, pair of transit service, bus replacements, preventive maintenance, training, all for capital, operating. Any questions?
Any questions, Council, for Mrs. Mills? Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Um, this is listed as a public hearing, is that correct? Okay, at this time, I'll open a public hearing. Do I have anyone who would like to speak for or against this item? Yes, ma'am, please come forward. Is it Madison, is that right? Yep.
Hello again. Um, I'd like to request, um, if possible, more chairs at bus stops. Um, I, when I'm driving around town, I've noticed that there are literally, there's no seating for bus stops, and I think that that is detrimental to our elderly community, because those are the main people who take our public transport. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am, we appreciate it. Do I have anyone else who would like to speak for or against this item? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on item ten D. Council, it's up to you.
I move to adopt resolution number zero-nine-two-three-two-five-dash-one as presented.
Second. Motion and a second from place one. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item ten D passes. Item ten E, second and final reading on our colonies, PID. Mr. Tips or Councilman Tips, would you?
Yeah.
Like to recuse yourself?
Yes, I will recuse.
Okay.
Is there any discussion? Have we discussed anything?
Let me look here, I'm lost on my pages. So this is not a public hearing, this is just a vote on a second and final. Ten E.
Brian, do I need to exit the diocer, for a vote? Okay. Yep.
We'll let Councilman Tips walk out there. And then, uh, I know we have Ms. Roberts here. Do we, do we have any questions for her, since this is a second and final reading? Ms. Roberts, you have anything else you need to speak on, or are you good? Okay, great. Okay, Council, item ten E is before you for action.
I move to adopt ordinance number eight-two-one-six as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second on item ten E. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with a four-oh vote. Would you step outside and bring him back in?
There he is.
We remembered you this time. Yeah, so, uh, next item up on the list is item ten F, uh, Mrs. Storrs, if you want to present that one.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, I don't have a presentation on this. We've discussed this item at length, um, during our budget review process. This is the formal ordinance to adopt the seventy percent COLA for our TMRS retirees. Um, and as just a quick reminder, um, as a quick reminder, um, back in twenty-eleven, the city had to drop, um, the COLAs for our retirees. And then, two years ago, uh, Mayor and Council were able to start re-establishing those due to some state, or state law changes that our Emerald Police Officers Association and the State Police Officers Association worked on with our legislators. And so this has been a huge win for our community, and greatly appreciated, um, that Mayor and Council have stepped forward and placed the funding in our budget for this next year to go up to this seventy percent funding. So this is just the formal ordinance to make that official. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Storrs. Um, you know, just to highlight this before we call it for a vote, uh, two previous councils, um, back in twenty-two, probably, uh, this was really being pushed by our APOA and our APOA president, along with some of our other legislatures or legislators. And so, um, this council has pushed it all the way across the goal line, but there was a lot of heavy lifting on the front end, uh, to get this done. And the state had to act in order for this to be something that we could bring back without a penalty. And so, really shows teamwork, and something for this council to be super proud of, I think, in finishing well, getting this all the way up to the seventy percent. And when the, the, the first discussions came on, I, I think the thirty percent was probably like a stretch of, can we get that done? And so, um, this is one of the most impactful things that I think we can do to show those people that work for the city, used to work for the city, are gonna work for the city, that they're appreciated, and they're not just set off to the side as the city continues to grow. So, um, thank you, staff, for leading well on this, and thank you, current council, for pushing this all the way up to the maximum. Do I have anyone who'd like to make a motion?
Make the motion?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second on item ten F. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with a five-oh vote. Okay, Mrs. Coggins, you're up on the Pratt board. Item ten G.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so Mayor and Council, you, I believe you're familiar with Potter-Randall appraisal district. While you set the tax rate for Amarillo and other governing bodies set it for their taxing districts, Pratt appraises the values. Um, we have seats on the Pratt board that council has a chance to nominate and then to come back and vote for. So we're gonna go through that process today and look for nominations. And as you'll recall, state law changed back in twenty twenty-three and changed the composition of this board a little bit. So the five yellow-appointed directors are the ones that your taxing agencies, such as City of Amarillo, has an opportunity to, um, elect into their positions. There are then three elected directors and an ex officio voting member that is your assessor-collector for each county. And we do have a board for both Potter and Randall County. So these next couple of slides just show you that makeup. And the individuals highlighted in blue, so for Potter County, that's Mitzi Wade and Chip Hunt. Their terms will be ending, and so that's who we're looking to, um, nominate for this year. They are both willing to serve again, so if you feel like you'd like to nominate them, they are willing to continue serving. And then the board positions at the bottom are your elected positions and your assessor-collector. Then I'm gonna move forward to Randall County. So on Randall County, we have Jack Kloss and Ginger White. Those two individuals are also willing to serve again. The, uh, reason that we bring this to you and we ask council to bring names forward to us instead of accepting applications like we do on our normal boards and commissions is because the eligibility requirements are a little more strenuous. And so there was a list of requirements in the council packet, and, um, those are summarized here on the board. They must live in the county for which they're elected to, either Potter or Randall, cannot be an employee of the taxing unit that participates, so City of Amarillo, school districts, City of Canyon, et cetera, cannot be related to an individual who's engaged in the business of appraising property for compensation or representing property owners for compensation under this title in the appraisal district, may not own property with deliqued taxes, and interest in certain contracts are prohibited. And just a little bit about timeline on this. We're here today for a first reading on the resolution to make nominations. Council may nominate up to two individuals per board, so you can nominate one or two. If you chose not to, you don't have to make nominations either, and so if you chose to go that route, we just would not provide nominations back to Pratt. You still would be able to cast votes whenever the ballot comes out. So we'll have first reading today, second reading on October fourteenth. We'll get that back over to Jeffrey Dagley at Pratt. He's the chief appraiser. He would then deliver ballots to us and all other entities on October thirtieth. At your November eighteenth and December ninth meetings, we propose having res- a resolution on there where you would cast your votes. And then on December thirty-first or by December thirty-first, Mr. Dagley would provide the results of the election and let us know who has been appointed to those two positions on each board. So, any questions about the process?
Question on the two on each Potter and Randall that have served. Can you tell us, uh, they are willing to serve again, but can you tell us the length that they have served?
I, I didn't have that information in the packet this year. I can find that information and send it to council in between this meeting and the next. I know, just from looking at names, I know Ginger White has been serving on the Randall Con- Randall County Board for quite some time. I believe Mr. Kloss was a little newer to that board. And then on Potter County, Mitzi Wade has been on that board quite some time, and I believe Chip Hunt was just recently appointed.
Okay, thank you.
And just one question, so?
Yes, sir.
If you're an elected official, you, because that's an appointed position, you can be appointed to the board?
There are some stipulations, uh, attorney general opinions that allow for that. I don't have those in front of me, but, but, but there are some positions that you can do dual service on. It has to do with if there's a conflict of interest, so, but I haven't studied them, so I can't really answer your question.
All right.
Councilmember, I'm sorry.
Any further questions? So, the business that we're tasked with here today is to make nominations.
Correct.
And you're gonna receive as many of those as we would like to give you, is that right?
Up to two for board, per, excuse me, up to two per board, yes, sir.
Okay, and are you, are you taking action on this from, uh, council? Or are you saying, because I was confused on the timeline, you're wanting it brought back later for a vote?
That is correct. So this first step is just nominating. And so whatever names council gives, if, if you make nominations today, and then on second reading at the next meeting, those will be provided back to Pratt, and they will be listed on the ballot, along with any other individuals that the ISDs or the other cities, the counties have provided as well. And then council, in November and December, will, uh, consider a resolution to cast votes for the individuals on that ballot.
Okay.
Does that help?
A little bit. So, um, as, as to the amount of names that you can put on that for the potential of the casting of the votes, you're, you're gonna limit that to one per council member, or just two for the council here today?
You are limited to two for the council as a whole. So there are two vacancies, and you may nominate names up to the number of vacancies
Okay.
that are on the, on the board.
Councilman.
Do we have any other names, uh, that have submitted?
We have not requested submissions for this board, Councilmember Prescott. We typically have, we've sent that information out to council and asked y'all to, uh, bring us names or per- perhaps solicit from those you think might be interested in serving.
Thank you.
Council, do I have any names you guys would like to offer? Um, on the Randall County side, I would like to nominate Tom Sherlin, uh, strong citizen advocate and willing to serve. I spoke with, uh, Mr. Sherlin, and so, um, his name would be listed next to Ginger White and, and the other name that's up, is that right?
If those two individuals are nominated again by a taxing entity, yes.
Okay, well, I would, uh, I would propose, uh, Tom Sherlin and, and see if I can get a second.
I would second that.
Okay. Um, so because I'm a little unfamiliar with what, what we're doing here in the purpose today, does that, does that qualify as a nomination, or do you want me to call a vote on that?
I believe it does, Mayor. What I would recommend is identifying two individuals or, or one for each board that council wants to nominate, and then let's work on one motion to adopt the resolution with those individuals.
Okay.
Because this is on here as a resolution.
At this time, we have Tom Sherlin nominated. Um, we need one more. Do I have anyone else on the Randall County, um, board that anyone would like to nominate?
Now, I've got a question before we move forward. Now, when we talked about this, I, this is not, we're just nominating, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So, so there are two steps in this process. You're in the first step, then you'll get to the second. So right now, you're just nominating. If you nominate someone today, it does not necessarily mean they will be appointed to that board. They will be put on the ballot. And when we bring that ballot back to you, it's gonna have your nominees, along with nominees from others. And so if Canyon nominates Joe Smith, Joe Smith will be on that ballot next to Tom Sherlin, and council will cast your votes for who you want to cast them for on that ballot.
Yeah, so each entity will, each entity has an opportunity to submit names, and then each entity then can vote from that list. So likely, you'll vote for the ones you're nominating, but you may decide, you know what, I like, Canyon had a great idea. I wanna go with that person. I didn't think about that person, so, so that's, that's how the process is. You, you nominate a couple, and then either vote on those two when the time comes back, or you vote on someone else, someone else, uh, nominated.
Can, can we see, uh, Potter County again?
Yes.
Okay, um, I would like to nominate Mitzi Wade to serve another term.
Second.
Motion and a second on that one. I would also like to nominate Chip Hunt to serve again.
Second.
Okay, council, any other nominations, uh, it's open.
Will we go back to Randall?
Yes, sir, let's go back to Randall real quick.
Now, are we, I know we've got two spots. Do, and we talked about, we can come up with next meeting, right? We're not obligated to nominate you today.
You could. You have a second reading of this resolution, and so if you wanted to leave it with Tom Sherlin today and someone comes back with a second, you could change that upon second reading of this resolution.
So council has today to make another nomination, since there's two open positions. Um, and then council would have October fourteenth to continue that nomination.
Yes, sir. And keep in mind, you also may leave it at one. So if, if for some reason you don't have a second person that you wanted to nominate for Randall, you could leave it at one individual as well.
Councilman.
So will we vote, will we ultimately vote, or will Pratt vote?
Ultimately, you will vote along with all of the other taxing districts, so the school districts, the counties. Um, and there is a, uh, breakout that I believe was in the email I sent you that shows the number of votes. It's based on population. And so, um, I say that it's not based on population. I think it's actually based on portion of the, the tax rate. Um, and you'll vote based on that. So we will have a certain number of votes that we are allocated. City of Amarillo gets to cast, like, for example, if it's five thousand, you get to cast five thousand votes on that ballot. And then each of the entities will cast their votes, send those back to Pratt. Pratt will accumulate that all and determine who is appointed af- off of that.
Will the other entities, if they want Jack or Ginger, will they be able to add them to the ballot? Or are we the only ones that add to the ballot?
They can add them as well. Every entity gets to add to the ballot, and almost every entity gets to vote. Some of your very small ones, like some of the, um, water districts that have very small percentage of, um, population, they do no, they no longer get to vote due to a change in state law.
Thank you for the clarification. I'll, I'll nominate Ginger White if she's willing to serve again.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on Ginger White, so I think that accomplishes our two.
It does. So if you'd like me to recap real quick, for Potter County, we would have Mitzi Wade and Chip Hunt nominated. And then for Randall, we would have, uh, Ginger White and Tom Sherlin nominated, if you move forward, as you've discussed.
Okay. Council, anything further on this item? Okay, thank you, Ms. Coggins.
Thank you.
You have everything you need, right?
Yes, y'all just need to motion and vote on the resolution.
Okay, so, uh, based on the direction that we've given on item ten G, we need to formalize a motion.
Still moved?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of item ten G as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with a five-oh vote. Item ten H, uh, Mr. Kendrick.
Yes, item ten H is consideration of resolution O-nine-twenty-three-twenty-five-dash-three, three. This is a, uh, first reading of a resolution that dissolves and abandons the dedication of unaccepted alley right-of-way. Um, this is located in block one-eighty-five of the Glidden and Sanborn Edition in the vicinity of Northwest Second Avenue and North Polk Street. And the applicant is Furman Land Surveyors, Inc., for Amarillo National Bank. And the applicant requested abandonment of this alley right-of-way in order to create a unified development site, as they own the property on both sides of this alleyway and have development plans for that property, so they wanted to, to be able to make that, uh, one complete lot. Uh, within this block, the railroad, um, years ago, actually took the south half of that block for some of their right-of-way. So as it's dedicated today, this alley that's unbuilt essentially terminates into the, uh, backside of the BNSF right-of-way. So upon review of this, the, uh, city and, uh, utility companies did not have any objections to abandoning, uh, this alleyway. There are utilities in this alley, and upon discussion with the applicant, um, they did agree to dedicate a public utility easement over this area at no cost to the city in order for it to be abandoned. So with that being the case, the utility companies did not object to this request. Um, and with all that, um, uh, fair market value payment will not be required on this, since the applicant is dedicating an easement over the entirety of the area to be abandoned. And with that, uh, notice of the request was posted as required. And as of this, uh, meeting today, we have not received any requests, uh, comments on this item. And, uh, staff is recommending approval of this, uh, item as presented today.
Any questions for, uh, Mr. Kendrick? Council, um, this consideration is before you.
I move to adopt resolution zero-nine- I move to adopt resolution 0923-25-3 as presented. Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we've got, thank you, Brady, we've got about halfway through this guy on the non-consent. We're gonna take a short 10-minute recess, we'll come back in here and wrap up our business, thank you. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and officially call ourselves back into session here, it's 4:45. And we will move on to item 10I.
Mayor, on these two, the next two, we have staff here, Sergeant Thomas with the Motors Unit and APD are here. If there are any questions, y'all want more information? These are annual grants that we typically have on the consent agenda, but because we have the resolution policy now, there will be two readings on it. But these are the tech stock grants that help fund operations and overtime for patrols, for speeders, traffic violation seat belts, child safety seats and DWIs and the like. Ones for commercial vehicles and ones for non-commercial vehicles.
Okay.
But we're happy to answer any questions and we've also got some slides repaired in case you want to see some data.
Really good. So counsel, we don't have a formal presentation that we need to go through, but you've, you've got these two here before you. So on item 10I, do we have any, any questions maybe for the chief or for Mr. Freeman? These are pretty good in accepting things that will continue to help us in our public safety department, so. Before you is item 10I, counsel.
I move to adopt resolution 0923-25-4 as presented.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, item 10J is before you, counsel.
I move to adopt resolution 0923-25-5 as presented.
Second. Motion and a second on item 10J, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 10K, we are now moving over to Mitch's department. And I think basically the rest of it, possibly. Mitch, how you doing today?
I'm good, how are y'all doing?
Good, good to see you, sir.
Good, good, well, thank you for having me back this week. Last week, I did a presentation during discussion on the items that are being presented to you for consideration today. I have a condensed presentation, essentially summarized version of the information I presented last week. If you all would like me to go back through that information, I can do so. If not, I have an update for you on the contract information and we're prepared to answer any questions that you may have.
We appreciate the condensed presentation, but we got a thorough presentation in the previous meeting. And so I think the update on the contract would be the best place to start.
Okay.
And then if we're leading into questions that that presentation could lend to, we could fall back to that.
All right, will do. So all of the contracts have been reviewed by city staff, the city legal department, as well as our healthcare consultants. They are in the vendor's possessions and we're just awaiting them to return the final agreements with all the edits that have been made to the contract. So the next stage is for us to receive those contracts from them.
Counsel, any questions on the front end on this one? Mr. Norman, there were just a few things and I think it'd be helpful to speak to that. With our Hub Consultants, we had requested in the contracts to put in the ability to audit, the ability to do price checks. I know that you had already confirmed to me in a previous meeting that we would have those abilities. I'd just like confirmation that those things were placed in the contract that'll, that'll be coming to counsel.
Yes, so I'll go ahead and just speak to the audit, audit rights. So the audit rights are built into the contract. And as far as the reference pricing, that was an independent exercise separate from the contract, a service that we would have to utilize through our benefit consultant. Liz can speak more to what that service is, how that works.
Great.
Hi, good afternoon, Liz Bemo, account executive with Hub International. And we will be implementing a quarterly review process and then an annual check on the pricing relative to the pharmacy.
That's great, so counsel, just so you'll know, and Ms. Liz, if you want to give me a better number, the number I remember was kind of the quarterly exercise might cost us $5,000 in additional funding, and then the annualized audit was $30,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so counsel, if there's no pushback, I think we've, we've done a really good job to kind of follow Councilman Tips' lead as well as our Hub Consultants in putting some stuff in the contract that'll be very beneficial. You're looking at one item that has a projected $4.4 million savings. And so in order to move forward the best way possible, I think $35,000 of being able to audit and price check as we work this out is very reasonable. So counsel, do we have any, any questions, concerns, pushback on any of that? Or if we're heading in a good direction, we'll definitely keep going with you, Mitch.
And when would that first audit or price check, when, when would that occur?
Per the terms of the contract, the actual audit occurs after the sixth month of the first complete plan year. So that would be probably in the July ti, or excuse me, the August timeframe of 2027. So you'll have the complete, and that would be the actual audit. But we'll be doing quarterly reviews starting with the first quarter of 2026.
And counsel, we would recommend that you place some money in your budget during this next budget season to actually cover some of those auditing costs, because they would not occur until the following fiscal year, as Liz mentioned, in 2027.
And then what's generally the result of the auditing, I mean, is it, is it, is it generally worth the investment?
Well, typically in, so if we're talking about the actual pharmacy audit, which would occur on an annual basis, we're looking for ensuring that discounts have been, the discounts that have been guaranteed have been adhered to. We're looking for ensuring that medications that are due rebates have been paid rebates. There is also where we'll look at the, to ensure the plans being administered per the specifications. Typically on that latter part, we're not, we don't find a lot because of the rigor that we go through during the implementation process. But it is absolutely of value because of some of the other questions that have come up in the past relative to the contracts and such, and to ensure that your, the financial arrangements are being adhered to as per the specifications of the contract.
Okay, Ms. Liz, thank you again for being here.
Thank you.
We appreciate all the hard work. Mr. Norman, I feel like we've covered this. Mr. Norman, I, I feel like we've covered this. I know you guys have done a lot of work on it. So do you have anything else that you want to offer on, on these as kind of an overall view?
No, sir. There's no additional information.
Okay. Would you prefer to walk through these one item at a time? Do you, I don't want to skip you. So if you have anything specific as to, as we're going through these, please stop us.
No, there's nothing specific, nothing outside of what was already presented. The items are broken into three separate items. So you'll see the first item that's before you now is for the medical TPA and pharmacy benefit. The next item that you would be considering is for the dental, fully insured benefits and other ancillary benefit services. And then the third item related to this particular RFP is our FMLA administration. And actually, I, I made a statement. I didn't want to make anything, but I do. I correct that. I just want to clarify. So the figures that were represented last week during the presentation, those were from the repricing exercise and that was based on the claims experience. So our actual rebate experience in our claim incurrence is going to vary based on plan participation utilization and the rebates also tied to that. I just want to be clear that that's a, a reference point for us to utilize in evaluating essentially quality of the, the vendor services and their pricing. But that will vary just based on utilization.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we, we definitely understand. It's an estimate based on
Yes, sir.
payouts. So.
Outside of that, though, I have nothing additional to add.
Okay, great. Well, counsel, it looks like item 10K is before you here for consideration. Major Medical.
I make a motion that we approve major medical RFP number 211-25.
Second. Motion and a second from place one. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with a five oh vote. Item 10L is before you, counsel.
I'd move that we award a contract for item number 21125 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 10L passes with a five oh vote. Give me a second here. Item 10M, FMLA leave is before you, counsel.
I move to accept 10M as presented in the agenda.
Second. Motion and a second on item 10M. Any further discussion?
Sir.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with a five oh vote. And we moved a little quicker through all of those than, than I think my, my recess earlier called for. But thanks for giving us a break. I appreciate everyone here today. You have a closing remarks, sir?
I do. I would move that we adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on adjournment?
You know it's before five, right?
Yes, before five. Doesn't feel right. Okay. Hey, thank you, guys. You're adjourned. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you, mayor.